Alright, it's nine o'clock. Voluptador meeting. Please stand in the place.
The agreement to the flag. United States of America, with the great liberty which is ours. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm speaking right?
Yeah. Here. Fisher Walters?
He's working still.
Fisher Reed?
Here.
Fisher Reince? Fisher Virbel?
Yep.
Sorry, I don't know how loud I can talk even from above.
We're screening that, listen.
You're whispering.
Yeah. I am whispering.
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? And forward. Reading of the cash balances.
Two hundred and forty-one thousand, two fifty-nine. Advance for the device sixteen, two six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Advance for two thirty-nine, yeah, fifty bucks, uh... I don't know. Two, thirty, about three hundred and fifty dollars. Advance for the two sixteen, we have one, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total cash, forty-one thousand, two fifty-nine, fifteen, four bills.
And the good news is, tax money could only mean so little, so hopefully we're slightly out of our front here, so... Now we'll pick up the consent agenda. If we've been supported on various side.
Aha.
Vote, come to the best. Are there any public comments?
Well, I would like to make a couple of comments on IMCOG if I thought I could take short this time. One of the things that is going to be coming up in the near future is the membership from all the counties to IMCOG. This year again, we did not raise the membership to any of the counties. We're still tight on line, just like everybody else, so that's one of the reasons it was not increased. We're working with some of the counties that just have some of their townships as members and not the county, so if we can get those all in, that would increase our cash flow as well as IMCOG as well. One of the things that is, we have brought to our attention here recently, federal money is dying up. It's harder and harder to find the funding to do some of the things that we like to do. But because of our position in, with all the organizations such as the Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, economic development districts, we are eligible to apply for EDA funding, which is strictly government funding, for federal government funding, and we can help the different counties with some of their larger plans that they want to go ahead with during the years to come. Additive mitigation also is something that we're working with with some of the townships and the counties. But these things also, we are a membership, the cost of that is only half of what it is for a non-member county, so you definitely do get your money's worth for the membership that you pay. Even though maybe forty-two hundred dollars is pretty good chunk of money. You do get things back from IMCOG to pay for that membership that you paid. USDA also works through IMCOG for a lot of the grants that we're still working with. With the, some of the ones that have gone through, now we're into July, so we shouldn't be hearing by August as to what's happening with the grants that have just been turned in this year, so... Other than that, we're still doing the same as we have been. We've got about thirty-three members to the group now, so we do have quite a, quite a group to work with with IMCOG and the regional economic development, so hopefully we can continue to do service. Thank you.
Any questions, Virbel? Are there any other public comments?
I can take just a minute, just to, I don't want to take up a lot of your meetings. Just a couple of points of information for you. The state is putting into place a veteran's driver's license program so that veterans won't have to carry around their DB-214s anymore to be able to take part in benefits and so forth, so that's an exciting thing for many of them. Also, our ORB legislation, thank you, Mr. Chair, for your help with that, and it's passed the House. It went to the Senate, got changed a little bit, got sent back to us and should have passed the House a couple of weeks ago, but political issues got in the way, so we expect that that will, that can be finished up in September. But that will allow, there are several issues going on with that, but the big thing we were working on is for local governments such as yourselves to be able to set up ORB plans, including shoulders of state highways such as N-30 and N-61, and their shoulders, so that you can have link-ups for those areas that have a job and a road that's already cleared for, for usage. So it'll allow that beneficial use of gas stations, restaurants, party stores, and other businesses, and really help that group of people that's been coming to Gladland County to really enjoy that recreation. So thank you again for your help on that, and it should be, should be through real soon, so... Other than that, if there's any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Is there a question? Is that helmet law for motorcycles apply to the ORBs too?
It, uh, we are gonna have to work on that. It did not, but we're gonna try and get that done too.
So right now it's still required to have a helmet?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you, Virbel.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? Okay. We have Mr. Sebeck here to talk a little bit about our sportsman's club in the park against some of his friends.
Alright, we'll see, I want to answer your questions more quickly, so I'll give you a real quick update. I'm gonna pass out these two folks as far as they'll go. The, first of all, thanks for inviting me to come in, Josh, and give a quick update. It's been about a year, just over a year since the Sebeck Family Charitable Fund has started taking over the management of the recreation area, so I thought it was probably a good idea to come in and give you an update on what's going on and answer any questions you might have. I put some things on the list here real quick. The first one there, we've got a grant we just finished. I work with Josh very closely on this. We just were awarded a seventy thousand dollar grant from the US Department of Agriculture and Rural Development to install a full kitchen onto the lodge facility down at the recreation area. So that will begin in the fall. We're pretty excited about that. It's gonna open up a whole, sort of a world of opportunity for people in the county to be able to use that facility and get more use out of it. We've also written security grants from the Midland Gladland Foundation for the renovation of the bathrooms and the bar serving area in the lodge. So this, I just gotta give Josh the final, final copy of the grant so if the money can be released, who else can do that? So here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be tearing the bathrooms out, renovating them completely. That, which also, that combined with the kitchen will really make the lodge a much nicer place for people to use and to rent. We had, this, just this spring, we had the lodge inspected for bugs, to make sure that the logs were, were safe from carpenter ants and anything else that might be in, that might put them in jeopardy, I suppose. We did the same thing with bats. We had a company come out and secure the building and make sure that the bats weren't able to escape without unfettered and then not get back in. We installed a metal roof on the groomer garage. We restored the cross-country ski grooming equipment. The rotten split rail fences, we took those down. The Boy Scouts helped us out with that. We took all the picnic tables and repaired, refinished those this year. We had some cooperation from the school building trade, their wood shop department to take care of that problem. We've got the lodge rented ten times this year. We've extended the mountain bike trail up to six point six miles and installed, actually we're progressing installing new trail markers on the high noon bike trail as well. We restored the lodge campaigns in full swing. You've seen that in the newspaper, and you'll see it again, I think, next week. We're offering, back when, by way of background, back when the lodge was built, the folks offered the sale of the logs as a way to raise money for the construction of the building. People actually purchased a log, and then there was a little metal peg affixed to the log that they purchased that was ultimately used to construct the building. The metal pegs are all gone. I think people over the years have pulled them out, taken them if they were committed to somebody who had originally donated. So what we're doing is we're going back to that process, selling the logs again, and attempt to raise money so that we can renovate the structure on the exterior and the exterior of the building. We've raised enough money today to begin the process of stripping and staining the outside, so next week that process will begin. The entire exterior will be stripped, cleaned, and then re-stained, which will, which will be really nice. It's in pretty desperate need, I mean, that the next project, as the money comes in from the fundraiser, will be to replace all of the windows. And I don't know if you've ever really gone and looked around there. There's a lot of windows in that lodge, so we're, that's the next time we can, just take all those old rotten, single-pane windows. I don't know if you noticed, but over the years, animals have gotten in and out of that building and actually eaten the windows. So many of the windows are missing bits and pieces of the more animals have been trapped in there and have decided to try to eat the way out. So we're going to try to take all those single-pans windows out and replace them all with energy-efficient vinyl windows. So those are things that we've done, things that are on tap. But more importantly, if you have any questions about how things are going up there, I'd be happy to answer for you.
Rick, what is, what's the current rent, rental charge?
Uh, that's my mom, that's my mom's department. I think it's two hundred and fifty bucks, and then you get a portion of that back when you return the log.
Uh, that's for the, for the cleaning and so?
Yeah. Yeah, logs for sale, if anybody's interested in buying a log to support the restoration of the lodge. A full log is two hundred bucks, half a log is a hundred dollars, a quarter log is fifty bucks, and a donation of twenty-five dollars, get your name on the plaque as well. So if anybody wants to do anything like that, all you have to do is contact my mom at the Oak Outlet here in town, and she takes care of all of the fundraising stuff. What we like to sell is many logs, because people, partial logs, twenty-five dollar donations, everything, everything helps. One thing, by way of, so that people are aware, one hundred percent of the money that gets donated by people for the recreation area, go back to the recreation area. We don't have any administrative fees, we don't have any paid workers. It's, uh, you know, if Terry Whittington donates two hundred bucks for a log, two hundred dollars goes into a window that gets installed. All of the labor and things like that for our projects are donated in kind or, or begged from various people as well. So the Sebeck Family Charitable Fund realizes absolutely no financial gain at all from, from any of the projects that we do. So I know that some people have some concerns that, that I'm helping making money, and the reality is that's not true at all. We, one hundred percent of all the donations goes right back into the lodge, according to the facilities, okay? Other questions?
We do have this check, so when I get your grant, I've got the other grant, we can submit this to you. And then we do have my donation of first time, eight fifty-five, July twenty-third, will be our public grant for your community kitchen grant.
Okay.
So we'll do that here, and I don't know if you need to be here, but I assume I can sign you that, and I ask you to get it.
Yeah, that'll start, the construction of that will begin in the fall. And I send an email out to everyone. We're gonna try to meet next week with Building Department, Doug Jacobson. You, try to get everybody at the table out there so we can start planning for that construction, so we can get it done, get it done right, so... Alright, thanks for having me.
Yep.
See you later.
We're a little early, but I think you're ready.
Won't you like me to be here?
Anywhere, wherever you're comfortable, Bill.
Okay, probably not home.
I think everybody here knows Bill, he's worked with us with our union negotiations, and we spend a lot of time together here, so...
Yes, I am here at the invitation of Mr. Deputy Commissioner of the Indian Finance Committee. Purpose is to give you an update on where we are as we begin the negotiation preparations, and specifically to talk about some issues and problems that we will be facing as we go forward. I will be generalizing. This is obviously an open session, so I will not be discussing these particular strategies or specific proposals. Like if humanity questions, I'll answer as best I can, considering we're in an open session. The major issue that we're going to have is, obviously, the county finances. We are all where I live with the current shortage. One of the things that we're gonna have to look at, personnel costs currently are about seventy-five percent of what you spend on a yearly basis. It's pretty obvious that reductions, probably a bulk reduction, is gonna have to come from that area. There are two ways to accomplish that. One is to reduce the number of personnel or to reduce the cost of personnel. In this regard, we have invited all of the business agents of the various unions to a meeting on the ninth point fifth here to explain in detail the county's financial position before we enter the end markets. They'll all hear the same information at the same time. Generally speaking, we're probably going to be looking for a reduction in costs of somewhere around five percent or more in order to achieve the financial stability that we need going forward. This is out of recognition of your finance positions, your time. A major concern that we have is that there are three units in the Sheriff's Department that have the right to go to Act 312 arbitration. I hope that after our meeting on the fourth fifth, that our inability to pay an increase should cause them to do twice what if we are faced with possible Act 312 actions, then we're probably gonna have to make some other decisions regarding the benefits required for, specifically, probably insurance. I'm not sure how much all of you are familiar with insurance, but in 2011, the legislature enacted Public Act 152. That basically limits the amount of money that you as a public entity can pay for healthcare. And there are two ways that you can choose to exercise your right under PA 152, and that is by part gap or by eighty-twenty. Part gap is that there are specific dollar amounts in just a period, so the maximum that you may pay for healthcare, including all deductibles, whatever that you might be a person. Eighty-twenty does not have a limit, but it also can pose a reversion, whether it's eighty percent or twenty percent, or even more. It is the exclusive right of the county to determine which method it will adopt, and that is so, and has to so, actually, on a yearly basis. This decision is not subject to arbitrators' rulings, at least at this time. I'm sure they would accept a new deck, but at this moment, that right is exclusively ruled. At present, we have selected part gap, which you're currently under, which are the maximum amounts. All of the units in the county currently comply with the part gap accepted or the agreement which others are courts. That, and that means open to the issue. The courts have extended their contract in two consecutive years, 2011 and 2012, and PA 152 says per year that any contract that you go extended must contain PA 152. Court, like, the court contracts do not contain it. Now, I calculate the cost of the county from 2012 and through 2013 will be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in excess of cap. So that has to be, has to be addressed. Now, that, that has been confirmed by Cadillac Insurance. To understand that the judge has created PA 152, he's gonna apply to them, but, and made regulations to enforce that, but the court will, they'll reconsider. The law clearly says that any coverage you provide, county provides, must conform with one of the requirements under PA 152. We also have some questions and answers that will be issued by the Treasury Department. We can very clearly state that courts are covered. Now, that is extremely important to you, because the Treasury administers it in compliance with PA 152, and you have to be in compliance to get the, what they call EDA, economic vitality incentive, incentive payments. And frankly, if it's your situation, you cannot afford to lose those, so that, that cannot apply. Finally, of course, we got a letter from another state, state superintendent administrator, to another district court stating that Supreme Court expects the whole of this to be blocked. So hopefully, we can get that resolved in a way that we can. Now, one thing you can do at this time is, and that is after we discussed it with Cadillac, we can decide to cancel the NOES plan, which is the current court plan. And we can do that effective January one, 2014. It's my recommendation that you pass a resolution to collect for that. And you're under obligations through 2014, which we're not yet.
Do you want to know the motion to motion? Stay in the balance, so we can cancel the insurance.
Support it.
It's end with the support of, of the citizens, of the people. Those are a couple of the issues that we're going to be facing.
It's gonna be very interesting this summer and fall. Hopefully, we will be able to get them done successfully, and...
And I would just point out that we did get a, receive a letter from our chief judge, and all of you received that same letter, but we don't expect that any increases through this year. And for some reason, he was understanding that there wouldn't be, but...
Our understanding with Cadillac is that, I think what he was specifically referring to is that Blue Cross has this option now about renewing by July fifteenth, or you would possibly face ACA Affordable Care Act litigation. And since that plan, my motion, will not be in effect after January one, that really is irrelevant.
And we feel that it's important that we try to get all our county employees under one program. We'll go into 2014, 2015 for our whole healthcare transition, whatever that may or may not be. None of us really know, but it will not only simplify, but it will limit our exposure so we can control our economy's exposure.
We look working very closely with Cadillac. No one can tell us what the impact of the Affordable Care Act is of this point.
I have told you also, I think, the, the day, and I, I really like the notion that we get bids hooked from a parent. She has a pregnancy, and I don't care with, with that, and so forth, and that certainly that we chop our business and that we have privilege to see all the available deductible options, as well as the code base and so forth. But either sharpen the pencil and look closer, because by making structural changes inside the plant, we can reduce the bringing costs, which is a savings to all our employees, and as much as the, if we adopt the eighty-twenty rule, the new part cap, that costs is gonna pass on to them. And I see it synonymous with the fact that we have charged more competition of the healthcare. So I think we should make certain that you'll notice that we want comparable quotes from other companies.
Do you wish to pursue that through your existing agent, or do you want to see other agents?
Well, we, that's up, I, I have a problem with, with...
An F W jockey?
Yeah, he has other sources, but we've gotten to have him just more or less automatically remove him from the cost. By the way, a structural change took place this year in the cross-deep. They are no longer quasi-government insurance company, they're now mutual, which permits them to go ahead and use the bases that they choose to be put in front of the attorney. That was a dramatic change, and it gives them that ability. But we shouldn't just automatically remove it with a boot. It makes sense.
As I recall in our contract, we have an insurance committee. Isn't, I don't know that they've ever met. You know why? And I think you have.
Who's that one?
Do you know who's on that committee?
It was one person that I reached with, with the insurance committee.
So I need to look that up, and I know it's you, and maybe, maybe myself.
You should have a copy of that, you should have a copy of the listing of the, of that committee.
So we, I guess my point is, we need to coordinate that with Bill, and then sit down with that committee. So I'll be working with Bill on that, and then try and get that committee together.
Will you get, will you get any communication with Cadillac Committee?
Definitely.
You're very fast to do that.
Good point.
No, yeah, maybe most, it was most necessary, though, because Bill's, I'm pretty sure, I don't think it's necessary.
We're going to be doing that, I think even lately, we have an obligation to seek out other committees, so we're gonna be buying them, or you might see them in a, in a, or a plan.
Exactly.
And you think, and I'm asking, do you think if we ask them collectively for those other plans, that we could then have the committee rebuild at that point? Just at the same time and under? Well, kind of, everybody will, I think that's acceptable, and then if they want to go in other direction, then you guys can bet them, so let's ask Cadillac. But I can, you want to do that yourself?
Well, Bill, I'd be happy to do it, yeah.
Okay, Bill.
Very good. Any other questions?
Well, talking about courts. Then, you know, first of all, I want to start off by mentioning that Barb Gule's been here for many years, and she's returned, and I found out, and I wish her the best, and her country for many years of service. It's not the easiest job in the world to do what she does, so thank you. With that, my reason concern is that we have, once again, an opportunity not to put it under social security number on a payroll, and working with the courts hopefully. But I've mentioned so many times, in this case, for back to 2008, and most recently, May fourteenth of this year and May twenty-eighth of this year, about working with finance before any employee would replace them. That's for all our departments, including the courts, and I certainly hope that they come to us and talk to us about any possible replacements and, and or do we need replacements? Can we collectively work together? Can we trust, like we've done in multiple other departments? What can we do? So I extend that out, because I don't know what and if there's going to be a replacement. So there may as well be possibly a letter from us. You guys want me to do this letter and send off to you?
We've done that once.
You've done it?
You believe it?
We could, you know, I just let it go. I just don't want somebody to get hired again without talking to finance.
I think, do you have any, do you have any, do you have any, do you have any money?
Okay. Well, and that might have been in our plans, and it's actually talking about that. In fact, it is, it's number seven, so we can cover it there. We did talk about that in finance. Okay. Any other questions for Bill?
That's good.
Thank you, Bill. And you don't need to hang around and be bored if you don't want to.
We got another meeting in four or five minutes.
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Thank you, your folks. We're ready.
I want to say, I thank the committee of Angela Iford for the lead of that except by the notice of the board commissioners, and I know I shouldn't say this, but I'm more of a plus for the time being as a judge. The super commissioner, District Health Committee, very questioning the director of that, and these two bigger corporations for that. The, the independent Olympic Day Dinner on behalf of the chairman, that's a real good event. How should we, in my mind?
Commissioner Virbel?
Uh, Michigan State Extension, Regional Meeting, that's more than, you know, the best there. Mr. Works, Region Seventeen, spoon, along, three of the, Mr. Seton, Mr. Kell, he needs it, Mr. Burke, who he now, who made an offer to, for a new director to replace Mary Cushing. And we're in, that is, we finalize the, we don't, and the, but last night, we were in town show meetings. We have a serious problem with, with the SNAP-FU, of the nineteen forty-four definition of SNAP-FU in the equalization information from what you're treating. Luanda Naco, who rarely ever says anything but smiles in her ear.